I call this meeting to order. This is Commissioner meeting of April 12th, 2023 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, my Commissioner meeting room on One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Space is absent. Deputy Director Yardley?
Here.
Director Carney?
Here. Number three is a moment of silence and salute to the flag. A moment of silence today is for the nine soldiers from Fort Campbell, Kentucky that passed in a training exercise last week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Number four is our public statement. Pursuant to Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice has been defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231 PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, and such notice being submitted on January 4th, 2023, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following. The New Jersey Herald, Star Ledger, and is also posted on a bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for Public Announcement, has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please meet all electronic devices. Number five is approval agenda. Please note that we'll have a couple changes to tonight's agenda. First item is 13N, has been amended to include additional funding awarded by the state of New Jersey toward the Farmers Market Grain Application Program. The new award amount is $5,462. Second, we have added an additional item under Section 13 resolutions. Item P is a resolution authorized in county to enter into contingency fee agreement with the law firm of Kennedy and Madonna, LLP, and his associated law firms for legal services related to PFAS litigation. Is that too loud? Can you guys hear me with that? The window open?
Not really.
We're gonna have to shut it? All right. No, I'll talk louder. We'll shut the windows maybe a tad bit. Just pretty hot, yeah. Sorry about that. I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, Commissioner Hayden, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose. Stain. Carry. All right. Six is proclamation, certificates, and presentations. We have two today. We'll start with our first. It's recognized in April 21st, 2023, as Were Purple Day. Representing?
Nick.
Proclamation. Nick, you're coming up. Herb, you gonna read that proclamation?
I am. I sent it down to be signed.
Oh, we gotta get it back to him. One second.
Why don't we face each other? This is always an honor to do because I think everybody has been kind of like somebody who's been trying to figure out what he uses. Whereas, after all, the most commonly used liquor supply is alcohol. Whereas, one, you know, probably don't suffer, not all of you depend, and wouldn't have the whole of the pain management of alcohol addiction. Hundreds of thousands of cases die each year of alcohol-related causes, including alcohol through car accidents, falls, fires, homicides, suicides. You ask, "Please start drinking." Point age of 14 or seven times more likely to develop alcohol addiction by hundreds of years. Whereas, the month of April has been recognized as Alcohol Awareness Month by the National Council on Alcoholism and Blood Dependence, and C A D group, and sponsor of Alcohol Awareness Month. And whereas, the color that you can see A D is used as to recognize Alcohol Awareness Month, is the purple one, the color that is similar to amethyst. Amethyst is the most beautiful and valuable of colors. The word amethyst comes from a Greek word meaning without darkness, which is an ancient language, which means that anyone carrying the very same could not become possessed. Anyone who displays the amethyst color announces they know someone whose life has been improved with alcoholism. Now, therefore, we resolve that the Sussex County Board of Commissioners at Friday, April 21st, 2023, to your Purple Day, we recommend alcohol awareness, and encourage all citizens throughout the County of Sussex to join the Purple Day. Order, boards of county commissioners, Chris Carney, Commission Director, Herb Yardley, Deputy Director, John Fantasia, Olivia Pete, Bill Space. I want to present you with this. There's always an honor to do this. Everyone, I don't want to take all the time out of their sleep, but everyone knows someone that hopefully has, may have had a problem that you have helped or have seeked help because this could be a tragic situation for them. When you give that presentation, why don't you say something to them?
So, good evening, everyone. Our municipal alliance coordinator, Nick Louizzi, cannot be in attendance tonight as he's currently attending the prescription and visit drug conference. On his behalf, I'd like to thank all of you for issuing this proclamation, bringing public attention to Wear Purple Day during Alcohol Awareness Month. Every year, the New Jersey Association of County Alliance Coordinators acknowledges Alcohol Awareness Month with Wear Purple Day on the third Friday of April by asking their community members to show support by wearing the color purple. Participants are encouraged to take and share photos of themselves wearing the color purple in order to bring attention to the dangers of alcohol, and we encourage them to improve their lives with treatment. With us tonight is Debbie Danielson, our chairperson from the Action Alliance, who was here to represent all of our hardworking alliance members. I'd like to thank you again for your continued supports and our efforts. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both of you. Thank you. Is Gary Posey here? Did I say that right?
Gary Posey in attendance?
Somebody was, do you know who he is? Do you know Gary? Okay, I think he might be coming in. Just want to give him a second if that was him. There's EMS. Sure. But, of course, one has no sense of urgency. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move ahead because I lack patience, so we'll come back. Seven, seven is public hearing. There is none. Number eight is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone, state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. I have a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stain. Pass. Anybody in the public that would like to make a statement on agenda items only, please come up and just state your name and municipality.
There's no sign-in sheet?
No sign-in sheet. Just take your word, who you are.
Last time I checked, I was Doreen Edwards in Vernon, New Jersey. Good evening. I just want to speak on 13O, and it's in regards to opposing E S. It says E S Q, it should say E S G, and I am in favor of us opposing that. Thank you very much for your diligence.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you.
Keep up the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought we did correct that, too. I'm not sure what happened.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Heaney. I live in Lafayette, and I want to say two things. I want to thank you for your service, and number two, I'd like to say that I agree with you opposing the resolution on the E S G.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is John Franzetti from Stillwater, and I also agree opposing E S G. So, I agree with the resolution. Hope you're all in.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike DeAnamort, I'm a 25-year resident of Sussex County, now the mayor of Chester Township. Like the folks before me, I'm here to speak tonight on Resolution 13O on E S G investing. And I want to thank you for putting this on the agenda as it gives me an opportunity to provide some much-needed truth with respect to my position on this issue, where you'd likely just be the opposite. I speak to you tonight directly, clearly, and unequivocally. Please vote yes on Resolution 13O on E S G investing. Employers in America are having a hard enough time as it is with federal and state governments adding layer after layer of red tape, leading to higher costs and less growth. Adding additional restrictions on our employers and the ways in which they invest in their own growth interferes in their ability to generate revenue, create a return, and provide jobs. That's the last thing we need in our place, New Jersey. As a member of the American Enterprise Institute's Leadership Network, I can tell you that one of AEI's goals should be one of our own, to develop and enhance economic policies such as free markets that have been proven to provide a better life for all people. This is especially relevant when you consider the state of New Jersey's responsibility of investing the dollars in our public employees' pensions. This investment represents a sacred trust that should be free of politics or any other considerations. The one and only goal of these investments should be to deliver a return for the public employees who are contributing toward their retirement. For the state to take its eye off the ball to consider factors other than ROI is a betrayal of that trust, and it impacts local property taxpayers as well. If the state were truly focused on return on investment, perhaps small towns like mine wouldn't be faced with 19% state-mandating pension increases. On this issue, I look to my former employer, the Heritage Foundation. They have called, and I echo this call, for states to pass legislation, quote, "reinforcing that state investment fund managers have a primary fiduciary duty to act in the sole financial interest of the shareholder, and that they are not beholden to E S G or any other preferences." I think this sentence is clear as a bell, and frankly, would strengthen the resolution before you. I submit for your consideration adding this key sentence in the therefore clause of your resolution.
One minute.
Our public employees and our property taxpayers are counting on our state leaders to make that commitment, and so am I. Please vote for Resolution 13O. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Ruby Sanders. I live in Newton. I just wanted to say that I agree with the resolution, again, E S G.
Thank you. We're good. We can hear you fine. You know, you're not dying, but please.
I'm Tony Acosta, and I'm from Newton, and I'm also in support of Resolution 13O against the E S G.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Alan Henderson, Lafayette Township. I'm standing before you with 43 years of law enforcement in government. I can say I pride myself on honesty and integrity. I was appointed to the planning board, and I can tell you this is the first I've ever resigned before I ever sat on a board. The honesty and integrity of this appointment was absolutely incredible from October of 2022 until March 8th. Thank you, Christina, for your honesty. She was the first one that was honest, gave me an honest answer. And I know item number 12 on your agenda, if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them.
Thank you.
My name is Helen Heckman. I live in Newton. I got here late, and I'm wondering if this is the time to discuss the Sussex County Library, the money that was designated, or are you going to do that in closed session and then come back down and talk about it?
We're gonna talk about it in closed session, and there's a good chance we, we'll be talking about it.
When you come back, Helen?
There it goes.
Okay. I'm very much in favor of all in the room.
Yep, you could, and you could talk. If you have three minutes, it's on the agenda that we're going to executive. So if you have something to say, feel free.
I visited the library recently, and then I visited E D today.
You're talking about the Dennis Library?
The Dennis Library in Newton, and there was a grant. Historically, there was a grant, and matching funds are involved, and there's, it needs so much work. But my biggest concern, I'm a volunteer at Newton Medical Center, I help so many people in wheelchairs, nobody can get in the Dennis Library. And I understand it's a historical building. The American Disabilities Act, we can't get in the building. I mean, you know, so, and the bathroom is on the second floor. And so, I feel that this grant is great, and I feel that the matching funds are necessary, even if you have to modify the plan so that we can afford it, but it's, it's very special to the town of Newton, and I think that any consideration that you can give to fostering those changes that need to be made should be made. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Wendy Whiffle. I'm a resident of Andover Township. I came to Sussex County in 1978, and my first job was as the bookmobile librarian for the Sussex County Library. So I look with glee when I see 13C, where you have taken it an opportunity to purchase a new unit using ARPA coronavirus funds in a, in a community and a county where we often feel as if more money goes out to the federal and state government than ever comes back to what it is that we need here in Sussex County, and I applaud you for that. I would also like to say I was the branch library coordinator when the library in Franklin was renovated, the library in Stanhope, and the library in Ferning were constructed with large chunks of state library aid money. I'm here also then to say, in this same vein, that we should be very careful about thinking about giving back to the state of New Jersey $3.5 million that has been earmarked for renovation of the Dennis Library in addition, too. I would not want to see us do that. The building needs to be made more accessible. The technological backbone that will be moved into that space helps to provide technology to all the branches of the Sussex County Library. So I ask you to be very prudent with the funds, which I know you are always careful of, and I would hate to see us give back $3.5 million to the state of New Jersey. If we can somehow come to an agreement with the library administration of a scaled-back plan, I would hope that that was being very carefully investigated, and I would like you to take into account the fact that those monies that have been not allocated in the last six years or so must have been doing something in the way of investment in the time that you had your money from the sale of the homestead. So I'm asking if you very carefully would look to support some type of a plan, work very carefully with the library administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Erin Fox. I live in Andover Township, and I wish I'd gone first because these two ladies so eloquently said everything that I planned on saying about renovating the Dennis Library and utilizing the $3.5 million in an appropriate fashion. And I would also like to add, when I moved here in 1982, one of the first things I did was to take my little daughter to the Dennis Library, and when she was pregnant with her first little baby, I bought a book that she said, "Just like the Dennis Library," and she, she, I would read it to her, and so I'm, there's a closeness upon this court, but I also know that you will do everything in your power to make this happen so that it is accessible to the members of Sussex County.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stain. Carry. All right. Six is proclamation, certificates, and presentations. We have two today. We'll start with our first. It's recognized in April 21st, 2023, as Were Purple Day. We're presenting?
Nick.
Proclamation. Nick, you're coming up. Herb, you gonna read that proclamation?
I am. I sent it down to be signed.
Oh, we gotta get it back to him. One second.
Why don't we face each other? This is always an honor to do. Because I think everybody has been kind of like somebody who's been trying to figure out what he uses. Whereas, after all, the most commonly used liquor supply is alcohol. Whereas, one, you know, probably don't suffer, not all of you depend, and wouldn't have the whole of the pain management of alcohol addiction. Hundreds of thousands of cases die each year of alcohol-related causes, including alcohol through car accidents, falls, fires, homicides, suicides. You ask, "Please start drinking." Point age of 14 or seven times more likely to develop alcohol addiction by hundreds of years. Whereas, the month of April has been recognized as Alcohol Awareness Month by the National Council on Alcoholism and Blood Dependence, and C A D group, and sponsor of Alcohol Awareness Month. And whereas, the color that you can see A D is used as to recognize Alcohol Awareness Month, is the purple one, the color that is similar to amethyst. Amethyst is the most beautiful and valuable of colors. The word amethyst stems from a Greek word meaning without darkness, which is an ancient language, which means that anyone carrying the very same could not become possessed. Anyone who displays the amethyst color announces they know someone whose life has been improved with alcoholism. Now, therefore, we resolve that the Sussex County Board of Commissioners at Rec. Friday, April 21st, 2023, to your Purple Day, we recommend alcohol awareness, and encourage all citizens throughout the County of Sussex to join the Purple Day. Order, boards of county commissioners, Chris Carney, Commission Director, Herb Yardley, Deputy Director, John Fantasia, Olivia Pete, Bill Space. I want to present you with this. There's always an honor to do this. Everyone, I don't want to take all the time out of my sleep, but everyone knows someone that hopefully has, may have had a problem that you have helped or have seeked help because this could be a tragic situation for them. When you give that presentation, why don't you say something to them?
So, good evening, everyone. Our municipal alliance coordinator, Nick Louizzi, cannot be in attendance tonight as he's currently attending the prescription and visit drug conference. On his behalf, I'd like to thank all of you for issuing this proclamation, bringing public attention to Wear Purple Day during Alcohol Awareness Month. Every year, the New Jersey Association of County Alliance Coordinators acknowledges Alcohol Awareness Month with Wear Purple Day on the third Friday of April by asking their community members to show support by wearing the color purple. Participants are encouraged to take and share photos of themselves wearing the color purple in order to bring attention to the dangers of alcohol, and we encourage them to improve their lives with treatment. With us tonight is Debbie Danielson, our chairperson from the Action Alliance, who was here to represent all of our hardworking alliance members. I'd like to thank you again for your continued supports and our efforts, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Both of you. Thank you. Is Gary Posey here? Did I say that right?
Gary Posey in attendance?
Somebody was, do you know who he is? Do you know Gary? Okay, I think he might be coming in. Just want to give him a second if that was him. There's EMS. Sure. But, of course, one has no sense of urgency. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move ahead because I lack patience, so we'll come back. Seven, seven is public hearing. There is none. Number eight is public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone, state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. I have a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stain. Carry. Number nine is Commissioner comments. Commissioner Hayden, you want to start?
Sure. So, on April 26th at 11 o'clock at the Farmstead Golf and Country Club located 88 Lawrence burg in Lafayette, there will be a luncheon for the Sussex County Veterans. Veterans only, is an appreciation luncheon. So if you know anybody, please reach out to senior services if you have any question, and we'd like to see as many of you that served attend. This Saturday, we're looking for volunteers for the Muskanet Kong Watershed Association and River Cleanup. It is at 9:00 AM. Interested residents can click on www.muskanetkong.org/rivercleanups, sign up for one of the cleanup sites. There's a free barbecue for all the volunteers, and it's something really good for the community to keep our water sources clean. Also, April 29th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we have an Autism Resource Fair at the Main Library over in Newton. The Sussex County Library System is hosting an Autism Resource Fair Saturday, April 29th. 125 more, Turnpike Newton. Participants include abilities of the Northwest New Jersey Representatives from Sussex County Community College Adult Transition Center and LACE Learning at College Experience Teams. In addition, it is a valuable resource of information, and there will also be door prizes and giveaways, and Detective Justin McCann from the Sussex County Sheriff's Office will be there, and Sussex County Youth Senior Service Staff will also be on hand to answer questions. This is, event is supported in part with funds provided from the Institute of Museum and Library Services. So if you go onto the Sussex County website, you can look that up. We encourage people to attend that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Fantasia?
Thank you. I have some information from the Sussex County Division of Health. Again, as every, every month, the Division of Health is offering COVID-19 vaccinations if you so choose to seek that out. It is at the Office of Public Health Nursing, 201 Wheatsworth Road in Hamburg, Wednesday, April 26th, from 3:00 to 5:00. And Public Health Nursing continues to provide weekly homebound vaccinations. I would like to jump to the influenza and respiratory illness report that I requested at the very start of the year because we did notice a rebound in flu. It seems, you know, COVID took, took the starring role and flu disappeared for some unbeknownst reason to any of us, and then it came back with a vengeance, and in my opinion, it never left, but I digress. So where we are right now is New Jersey emergency room visits related to the flu are higher compared to last year, about 1% higher than last year. The good news is our school absenteeism rate related to the flu is lower than compared to last year because you know, in the winter, we were in the crux of it in Sussex County, actually was, you know, was, was absolutely an outlier in absenteeism due to flu-related illnesses. I want to give you just a little bit of information about hospitalizations for COVID, just to jump back as to where we were, as to where we are. In the month of April, there have been two hospitalizations in Sussex County due to COVID. In March, there were 13. February 39, January 76, and you see the trajectory, so now we're at two this month. So it seems that we are moving out of respiratory illness season. In the state of New Jersey, there were four confirmed influenza-associated pediatric deaths and 84 severe pediatric cases of flu this season. So that was something that we kept our eye on for sure. Now, the good news is Sussex County outbreaks in flu and RSV in the month of April. We have no outbreaks in schools and daycares, no outbreaks in long-term care facilities, and no outbreaks of flu in schools or long-term care facilities or any of our nursing homes. So that is really positive news based upon how those diseases tend to spread, especially in a lot of the state-run facilities. Now, Sussex County held a mass care exercise, and you may have seen that if you follow social media of the county. The Office of Public Health Nursing and Environmental Health participated in a mass care exercise held by the New Jersey Department of Human Services in coordination with the Office of Emergency Management at the Sussex County Fairgrounds, and they worked alongside the Sussex County OEM. This happened on Saturday, April 1st. And the exercise was set up to test basically what it would look like for an emergent disaster shelter, how we would set something like that up, what would staffing look like, a dormitory setup, support for people with disabilities, access and function needs, and companion animal sheltering components, and it helped us to address if we had any gaps in any emergency plans that we have in the county right now. So for more information on the public health emergency preparedness program, please visit the Sussex County website at sussex nj.us. Definitely ties into last month when I visited a meeting of the Skylands Tea Party, and we had a presenter, I know some of you are here tonight, we had a presenter who discussed disaster preparedness. You're here, actually.
Yeah.
I just realized, I couldn't see you through the microphone. So, you know, it kind of ties in, that's very interesting for you to take a look. I know there were some questions from that group that did ask, you know, what happens in this situation? Where do I go? What should I do? So if you visit our website and check out the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program, it can help residents become further prepared here in the county. I did want to just share with you just a couple updates from the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council. They did send their quarterly reports, January, February, March. I forwarded it to all of your emails, and tomorrow I have a meeting with Ron. It'd be a Zoom with Jill because Jill is very ill tonight, but she's hopefully gonna hop on the Zoom and be able to participate for the remaining ARPA funds. I know the Arts and Heritage Council is having some requests for use of some of that ARPA funds, especially to work alongside our Historical Society and senior citizens, ways to get art out in the community. But some of the things that they had done in, in the first quarter, very, very organized. They have a first-family discovery pass program for the Arts and Heritage Council. We've been getting some notoriety from the state of New Jersey, and the New Jersey State Council on the Arts have been participating, paying attention to us. Our executive director attended to the business-to-business breakfast for the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce, which was great. There have been gallery exhibitions, the 8th Annual Exposed Juried Photography Exhibit, that's a big one. And if you don't know where the gallery is, it's on Spring Street in Newton, and it's open the weekends. It has different, varying hours during the week because it is staffed by volunteers even though there is an executive director to the program, but there's all different kinds of workshops. They had etching, etching mirrors, etching glass, acrylic pours, a painting group, a gallery, community meeting, and they really appeal to all ages. They have programs for youth, programs that are open for everyone, and competitions that actually are judged at the state level for senior citizens. So I urge you to, to visit the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council website. They also have a pretty active Facebook page, and the gallery is on Spring Street. I would like to just, you know, invite you all to investigate that. I apologize, my printer took a dive today at home, so normally I have my notes printed out and written, but I did want to share something with you. This is April, and April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and if you drive, you will see, you know, in the center, there is a display that's out to bring our attention to that, but I'm involved with a group called Lynn's Warriors with a lady called Lynn Shaw, and she's very, very active on the state and national level in petitioning for some changes specifically for laws that deal with cyber access to our children and dangers that are present. I just wanted to give you a few statistics in recognition of that. You know, this month recognizes and focuses on the importance of families and communities working together to help prevent child abuse and neglect. Every 11 seconds, a child is reported abused or neglected in the United States, and one in 10 children will be sexually abused before they are 18 years old. And for every incident that's reported, it is estimated that two are not reported. It's hard to comprehend, you know, and it's, it's hard on all of us. As many as 500,000 predators on the internet pose a threat to kids daily. One in 25 children will be manipulated into physical contact with one of these predators in a year's time. The coronavirus pandemic has contributed to a rise in online enticement cases, and 82% of the predators on the internet are male. Only 15% of parents are aware of what their kids are doing online, and receiving sexual images from children is the most common goal of these predators on the web. And this might surprise you, but social media is the place where over 80% of child sex crimes start. So a lot of these programs are now moving into the schools. We need stronger laws. As society evolves, so do we, and the need for these laws to help protect our children. If you or someone else is in immediate danger, and you know about it, hear about it, or suspect it, besides calling 911, there's also the Child Help National Abuse Hotline at 1-800-48-CHILDS. Ever since April was designated as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in 1983, Prevent Child Abuse America and its nationwide network of state chapters, along with other child welfare organizations, have recognized this as a time to raise awareness and inspire collective action so our country's children can lead their best lives. So again, if you visit Prevent Child Abuse America, they also have a wealth of resources. I'd like to ask the board for its consideration to invite Lynn to do a presentation for the board on, you know, sexual exploitation of children and her organization, because I've been, you know, in contact with her for the past year. I know she visits a lot of the schools. It's very valid. So if that's okay, I can reach out to her and perhaps schedule a time where she can come and present to the board, to the public.
Yeah. Send your level.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to forward the contact information, I'll reach out to her. Okay. Thank you. That's all.
You good? Thank you, Commissioner.
And, uh, it's open the weekends. It has, uh, different varying hours during the week because it is staffed by volunteers, even though there is an executive director to the program. Um, but there's all different kinds of workshops. They had etching, etching mirrors, etching glass, acrylic pours, a painting group, a gallery, community meeting, and they really appeal to all ages. They have programs for youth, programs that are open for everyone, and competitions that actually are judged at the state level for senior citizens. So I urge you, uh, to, to visit the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council website. They also have a, a pretty active Facebook page and the gallery is on Spring Street. Um, I would like to just, you know, invite you all to investigate that. And I apologize, uh, my printer took a dive today, uh, at home, so normally I have, uh, my notes printed out and written, but I did want to share something with you. Um, so, uh, this is April, and April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And if you drive, you will see, you know, in the center, there is a, a display that's out to bring our attention to that. But I'm involved with a group called Lynn's Warriors with a lady called Lynn Shaw. And she's very, very active on the state and national level and petitioning for some changes, specifically for laws, uh, that deal with cyber access to our children and dangers that are present. I just wanted to give you a few statistics in, in recognition of that. Um, you know, this month recognizes and focuses on the importance of families and communities working together to help prevent child abuse and neglect. Every 11 seconds, a child is reported abused or neglected in the United States. And one in 10 children will be sexually abused before they are 18 years old. And for every incident that's reported, it is, um, estimated that two are not reported. Um, it's hard to comprehend, you know, and it's, it's hard on all of us. Um, as many as 500,000 predators on the internet pose a threat to kids daily. One in 25 children will be manipulated into physical contact with one of these predators in a year's time. The coronavirus pandemic has contributed to a rise in online enticement cases, and 82% of the predators on the internet are male. Only 15% of parents are aware of what their kids are doing online. And receiving sexual images from children is the most common goal of these predators on the web. And this might surprise you, but social media is the place where over 80% of child sex crimes start. So a lot of these programs are now moving into the schools. We need stronger laws. As society evolves, so do we, and the need for these laws to help protect our children. If you or someone else is in immediate danger and you know about it, hear about it, or suspect it, uh, besides calling 911, there's also the Child Help National Abuse Hotline at 1-800-48-CHILD. Ever since April was designated as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in 1983, Prevent Child Abuse America and its nationwide network of state chapters, along with other child welfare organizations, have recognized this as a time to raise awareness and inspire collective action so our country's children can lead their best lives. So again, if you visit Prevent Child Abuse America, they also have a wealth of resources. Uh, I'd like to ask the board for its consideration to invite Lynn to do a presentation for the board on, um, you know, sexual exploitation of children and her organization, because I've been, you know, in contact with her for the past year. I know she visits a lot of the schools, it's very valid. So if that's okay, I can reach out to her and perhaps schedule a time where she can come and present to the board, to the public.
Yeah. Send her that one.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to forward the, um, contact information, I'll reach out to her. Thank you. That's all.
You good? Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Director.
Thank you. Um, just before we start, I just want everybody to know it's Herb's birthday today, so if you guys want to sing later.
Yay!
He's old, really old.
Oh!
That was nice.
The old guy.
That was the old guy.
That was probably the totally old guy.
You're good? Go ahead, deputy.
Um, so I was able to, Sussex County had an awards luncheon and Dawn was there, and were you there, Chris? Um, and Senator Orho was honored, uh, for his years of service, uh, to the county and was in the senate, as well as there were many other people. It was a very nice event. Hopeakon, I was at, uh, on the sixth, or was that the Hopeakon Seniors Meeting and, uh, watched a review of, um, presentation that was a review of the services that the county provides to seniors and, uh, very good presentation. And I look forward to, uh, many of the response, uh, Lorraine gave there to them. Um, on Saturday, this Saturday, there'll be a white sheet presentation. And this is put on by Daisy and it's also put on by, um, um, Jenny's House. And it's a visual protest featuring empowering, um, t-shirts that bear the witness to sexual violence and children, child abuse within our community. And, um, it is, uh, I am a member of the Jenny House Board as, as one of the commissioners. And, um, there is also, uh, this will be starting at 11 o'clock, if you'd like to come out to that ceremony. There are two resolutions being read, one for, um, domestic violence and one for child abuse. And it is a very serious situation, um, something we normally don't talk about a lot, but it is prevalent in the country. Also, on the 19th of March, they have an open house. So you hear, you hear something called Jenny's House and you go, what is it? Well, you get an opportunity on, um, April 19th from 9:00 to 12:00. You do need to, um, RSVP, let them know you'd like to have a tour. They will take you to, uh, to the building and you can, um, go to the Jenny's House website and there's a, there'll be a form or a link there and you can get a tour of the facility and they will tell you, um, how they discover what's happening to children and how they treat them and how they're able to, uh, diagnose when children are being used. And they do a great job over there. Uh, also, just, I also want to talk about, there's a women's health clinic, um, which is on Thursday, tomorrow, the 13th, 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing. And to make an appointment, you have to call Public Health Nursing at 973-579-0570 and extension 1246. I mean, that's for women. Uh, also, your reminder that the Sussex County Veterans Appreciation Luncheon, that'll be Wednesday, April, um, 26th, from 11:00 to 2:00 at the Farmstead Golf and Country Club located, uh, on Lawrence Road in Lafayette, and pre-registration is required. For, uh, additional information for the luncheon, you have to contact the Sussex County Division of Senior Services, 973-579-055, extension 1277. Or, uh, you can contact them through Senior Services at Sussex NJ, that US. You do have to be a veteran to attend that event. So if you know any veterans, uh, friends or if any of you are, just let them know that there is a luncheon that we'd like to, uh, extend an appreciation for their service. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm just going to read a little brief passage from Jill. Again, as Commissioner Fantasia said, she is sick. Uh, so, "Good evening. I was really looking forward to attending tonight's meeting, especially for the introduction of the 2023 county budget. Unfortunately, mild virus has kept me home tonight. I strongly believe that we are presenting a healthy budget that both provides resources for the county to perform its services and functions while keeping the taxpayer in mind. Having the privilege of working on the operating subcommittee this year, we had the opportunity to sit with all the division and department heads and review their budget requests. In trimming the original request, we love to utilize American Rescue Plan funding to extend one of the one-time charges in the operating budget as best practices, practices suggest, as to not hinder from future budgets. The capital budget also utilized American Rescue Plan funding in order to minimize future debt payments, which is part of the board's long-term goals. I look forward to voting on this budget at the final adoption." That's from Jill. As for my reports, I have a few. Um, this is from the Sussex County Division of Planning and Economic Development. This is the project for farmland preservation acquisition. This money comes out of, uh, open space money, which I do not like that term. Uh, in my town, we use open space too, and I saw a lot of, um, wetlands getting bought up, which basically takes that property off the tax roll, and that's ridiculous. Why would you ever want to do that? But preserving farmland is, it's a passion. I like that and I think that's what it should be called, so it's just my tidbit. Uh, Milestone Achievement is an easement acquisition through the Farmland Preservation Program, involve many steps, some of which go beyond a typical real estate transaction. Additional steps include parcel evaluation, application preparation, and submission. Read light approval, the name given to the state's preliminary acceptance of a project, appraisals, appraisal certifications, final approval from all project partners, deed prep, and encumbering funds. Um, the, there's two farms that they were able to preserve. One was a Newton Land Trust LLC, and the other was Vosber Farm. Uh, the, uh, status of this is they prepared analysis of these two properties, um, GIS-based modeling, generating maps and data based on statutory criteria, scheduled field visits. And, and these fields visits, they get, I brought it up at our last meeting, the, if, when you're, when you're farmland preserve, they, there is an automatic check that has to be done, I believe, every year. So that has to happen on two properties. So, anyway, proud to see that. Public Works, um, project is roadway buffer enhancement and clearing. DPW crews have been working in Hampton Township on Route, uh, County Route 519 to enhance roadway buffer. Crews have been removing old fencing and brush along the northbound lane. They continue working in the area to cut brush along the southbound lane. They've been doing a good job. I've seen it for myself passing through that area. Uh, replacement of Bridge LO4. This has been going on a while. This is replacement of LO4, County Route 663, Warbasi Junction Road in Lafayette, for those who you have to deal with that. Uh, the last two things that they have to do is guide rail and paving, uh, site cleanup, punch lift, and demobilization. So the majority of that is done hopefully in the next month or so, you'll see that through. NJTPA report, uh, construction work has begun by the company awarded design to build contract by the New Jersey Transit on the Roseville Tunnel Restoration Project on the Lackawanna Cut-off Passenger Rail Project. The rail right-of-way has been cleared of trees from the Roseville Tunnel west to the Roseville Road Station located and has been started on reinforcing the right-of-way to support numerous concrete trucks and other related construction equipment that will be necessary for the rehab work on this tunnel. On March 22nd, 2023, Amtrak lease analysis of options for the Scranton to New York Amtrak Passenger Rail Service, preliminary service plan and financial analysis. And this study is for the proposed corridor, including Lackawanna Cut-off in Sussex and Warren Counties, and was repaired by Amtrak's National Network Planning Department. Study revealed strong potential for rider economic benefits for the region and existing lines suitability for passenger rail service on the proposed corridor. The entire study is available on the Amtrak's National website. So, a couple of people talked about the library a little bit, and I'm not sure where you heard any of that information, and not to say it was true or not, but, uh, I have a little problem and it, it kind of stems from the Herald. For one, you know, we were quoted in there, Ron tapping myself, when these quotes were not true. One might have been true, but when we spoke to Bruce Scruton, it was to be off the record. Time and time again, I have a problem with the Herald, not only because you can't even start a fire with the paper, but, but, but yet it's wrong. Uh, I thought I had bad grammar, but you know what? I build bridges for a living. I don't write, you know, articles. Uh, it's, it's really atrocious, so please don't believe everything you read. You know, I think our parents thought it was that, and, and this is just atrocious, atrocious, atrocious. So, if you want to hear facts, please call us, email us, or come to a meeting, but don't listen to Bruce Scruton in this paper. Please don't. Um, about a week ago, I think it was last Saturday, um, I was sitting with a retired captain from Newton, our friend, our sons play lacrosse together. And we were talking about, um, school shootings. And I, I, I thought, because last year, uh, Mike Stroud and myself, we called on the county to make sure all schools had security, armed security guards, not just security guards, not, not run the mill like I had in my high school, somebody who carries a gun. Because I'm a true believer, if you walk in that, in that school, you don't walk out of that school, right? You have a gun, you don't walk out. Apparently, there are schools in our county that do not have that. So I'm not sure, again, I'm calling a couple of people out tonight, but you know what? Screw it. Our county superintendent does absolutely nothing when it comes to regards to this. I had a conversation with her last year and they, every school could do what they want. So I'm calling out, and I think the commissioners would probably back me up on, on this, every school should have an armed security guard. I'm baffled why I even have to bring this up. I really am. So hopefully they, they, they read our minutes or listen to our audio. Too bad the paper's not here, right? But nevertheless, um, bothers me a little bit. Dawn usually, when she goes first, she usually brings the things that we go out to. And we went to a Byram Historical Society at Waterloo Village. Haven't been there in forever. I think last time I was there, I was bringing one of my kids there as a chaperone. Um, but it was, it was a nice event and they're having a lot of more, a lot more events there. Nice, nice place, very, very nice place. Uh, so if you're ever looking to go to Waterloo, get on their website and, uh, they have it out all listed, so that is all I have.
Commissioner Barney, can I add something just quickly?
Sure.
To what you had said, yes, statutorily, it is up to individual boards of education. If that doesn't exist, if there's not an armed guard already in place, it's not a function of this board or the county sheriff or, you know, it's, it's beyond our purview to enforce. It can be something that we highly suggest. It can be a campaign where we reach out to boards of education, but it is up to the individual school boards of education statutorily to approve an armed security or school resource officer, police, anything of that nature, uh, coming into the school. So that's why you're going to see the differences, or it could just be simply it didn't get to them yet, you know, it wasn't on that high of the priority list, but it's not a function of the board or the sheriff to be able to enforce that.
Yes. Thank you for that.
So.
Yep, nope, absolutely. It's just, uh, it's a shame. Anyway, uh, number 10, approval of consent agenda, have a motion. Thank you. Commissioner.
There is, there is no consent agenda.
Um, you know what? I would like to go back to, uh, Gary, for your presentation. I'm sorry about that. We had to keep going. Dawn Fantasia has no patience, so she didn't. Gary Posey's from the First Aid Council, he's delegate of the 12th District, Emergency EMS. So come on up. What? What?
Could you, um, first of all, I just want to apologize, I was playing music.
Yeah. Oh, sorry about that. Yes.
I'm here to request some help from the commission. Basically, I do represent the, the Jersey State First Aid Council, 12th District.
Can you, can you use the microphone? Because the.
No. There you go.
You could maybe, maybe we could stick that in there. Is it working or not?
It, it'll work to record. It doesn't amplify.
It doesn't? Oh.
Sorry. I'm trying to.
Okay.
As a certain state, I am with the Jersey State First Aid Council, 12th District, and I represent the district as chairperson to the commission, board of commissioners. So, uh, basically what we were looking for was if there was any type of grant assistance that the county could help us with, uh, possibly with grant writing. And, um, when we last appeared here, we had a decrease in, in county donations to the squad. But unfortunately, as everybody's aware.
It did.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody's aware, everything's gone up and it seems, you know, pre-pandemic versus post-pandemic, there's whatever justifications that we use. Our medical supplies and our, our service and our vehicles are, uh, expensive. It's just, uh, we've gotten that in because we don't have the donations with our fund draw that we were given, nor do we get the same amount of money when we stand out on the street, or, uh, coin tosses. So, uh, we'd like to ask the committee if they could at least look into possibly increasing the donation they make into the squads. The squads themselves that answered, uh, lead 2022, I don't think the number, answered over 25,000 calls. That's between 15 and 3,000 squads. A couple of squads have failed, which I'm sure you're aware of. Unfortunately, uh, part of it was due to lack of long-term, part of it was due to lack of fund. Our squad itself, uh, we've been a team now for around 23 years. And, uh, we have been up and down in the financial crisis. We're trying to hold our own, but that means we're off a lot of projects and we throw unnecessary service. We have two older vehicles in 2004 and 2006, and then we have two, 2016. We're going to have to replace them, because right now we do not have the funds. Whether we make the deadlines farm, whether we're able to raise the funds, the average ambulance, we're not going to raise equipment, stuff recording, lights, and, uh, the side of patients, performing care. If you'd like, I would love to bring ambulance over to you, to, you know, I would give, see them instead of ambulance, but it's pretty tricky, especially when you're looking at portable suction, defibrillators, and such, and, uh, kind of, uh, grease and stuff like that. The equipment that we need in order to operate a patient, that we could, a lot of our calls in the area, um, are for the elderly, and unfortunately, the county is aging. But a lot of them are created to call for assistance, the way till after 6:00, if the council have the paid services. And we've been fighting for a while not to get involved with paid services. But the draw of it is, is I don't want to get to a patient's house and have them come and run and go like this for the last few days. I didn't want to call because I didn't want to get to the, we can see some that lay there under caps, it's 67, 80, 75 years old. It bothers me. But, um, again, we're fortunate that some of our, our patients are available, but we still need to, uh, which we probably use part of that money to come up with some type of poster that, that trying to go on like this, I suppose. We haven't been successful. A lot of the squads where they get that, uh, athletics target program, where they're, they're training, they're teaching EMT course, they're also letting them ride. And what they're doing is they're preparing them for employment with, so that they would go on a frequent date basis. State courts have not done that, they have a training program that is not where they're hiring, you know, including EMT course. We don't employ that one. There's a lot of turnover in, it happens to a lot of the EMTs once they, the courses here, um, become certified as a state and national. Skyline tests that they, uh, basically give up riding in a few months, six months, years the average, because they go to work from the services. You know, they're all there versus state, and some of them end up, maybe career adverse, some of them end up going on to become, you know, techs and ER nurses, doctors, that's a while to hear. But it still boils down to the support that we get, and that's what's going to help people successful to be there once, every time a year, possibly, for their 24% of things. It doesn't matter to us whether it's, uh, if they're able to help us, or if they're increased, it would be, you know, it would be money well spent. And I live in, I do here for 25 years, and, um, my first thing you want to do is for 2030, so, you know, I have to borrow this.
First thing we have Gary's information. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is one thing, I hate to go back, but, uh, there's one thing that's important to possibly a lot of people here. I know, um, we've been dealing with Horizon. Uh, Horizon's been here before. They should be here tonight. We asked for them to be here. And again, I guess I'll throw somebody else, else under the table, but, yeah, they're, they're just not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So I just want to give an update regarding the ongoing issues with the county employee retirement insurance plan. We have received updates today from insurance broker Brown and Brown that there have been talks with executives from both Brown and Brown and Horizon. Brown and Brown in the county have now been advised that within the next two, week or two, I'm sorry, claims will be solely processed and paid by Horizon. The third-party contractor further will no longer be involved in process. The third-party contractor further will no longer be involved in process. Board has been advised that, that employees and retirees will no longer have issues with deductibles and claims being paid. We have been advised by Brown and Brown to give it until May 1st to see improvement. While the board is encouraged by this news, we are unhappy, unhappy with the response received from Horizon, and we look forward to continued communications with Horizon about what brought us to this point and their commitment to ensuring that our employees and retirees are receiving the health care coverage they expect to receive. So if we can probably get this out, something like this to our employees as well.
I have a question. I, I don't know whether I get you the president in, but that's incorrect information.
Yes.
That's incorrect, because some people are receiving checks, um, to pay their bills and saying, but, but, and I happen to be involved in this process, and yet they were telling us, do not pay the bills. So what happens is people are getting notices, you're 30, 60, 90 days late. Uh, and then, you know, when you go to the doctor's office, they're saying, well, you have to pay money here. And then you pay the money, and then you go home, and then if now there's a check. So I'd like clarification, if we could get it.
So that's hot off the presses as of 3:30 this afternoon from a, an executive higher up with Brown and Brown. The CEOs of the both companies actually communicated, and that, that's the 3:30 update.
And, and we'll be here tomorrow, Herb, so you, uh, I don't know if you're.
I just know that there are people, it's just very convoluted. So you, so some people are getting checks, and they were told, don't pay the bills, so now they're, so this is going to resolve all of those problems.
Further will no longer be a part of the process, is what I'm told. They will handle both the claim and the deductible portion.
But that's beginning May 1st.
Within the week or two, Brown and Brown said, give it till May 1st.
So what then happens to those, like, like Herb said, when they received a check, do they pay? Is this something? How, how are those retroactively?
So they're supposed to be having, um, because I brought that up to them today, they're supposed to have further communications, because, like Herb said, the retirees are getting checks with no designation as to what they're for. So they are going to look into that and resolve that issue as well. So the checks are coming, but now we don't know what they're for.
So.
And it's attacked a totally different set of retirees. Either pre-Medicare eligible retirees are getting them. So now we're in a whole different.
And the actives are getting them as well.
Yeah, so.
The active employees are getting them as well.
So we're, we've added another layer of nets.
Confusion.
To this, this thing. So more to come on that.
So plus we also have people getting overpaid.
Yeah.
So they don't.
We're all over.
And they don't know if you do.
They're all over the map. I don't know, they're out of control.
But Herb, if you're, if you are around tomorrow, it'd be good if you could swing by.
Yeah, I would, we'll stop in.
Okay. Uh, number 11 is the approval of minutes. This is from our regular meeting, March 22nd, 2023. Take a motion to approve the minutes from, from the regular meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Fantasia, any discussion? If you would, please say aye.
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 Pose, same, carries.
If you make, if you do a motion to accept a few of, the fact of the matter is that it's a letter was, there's a resignation letter received. It's administratively accepted. You don't need to do anything.
All right, we're going to skip 12, we'll go to 13. 13 is resolutions. Um, A through P, I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through P.
So moved.
Mr. Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Mr. Fantasia, any discussion?
Yes. Actually, this is, um, oh, am I correct?
It's, yes, A through O, there's no P.
Yeah, no, oh, um, there's an amendment.
Oh, right, okay, P, right, right, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I have discussion on O.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the resolution, uh, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, opposing preferential treatment or discrimination based upon environmental, social, and governance, um, ESG standards. And I just kind of wanted to make a, make a statement, because I know it's been, uh, tossed around quite a bit, and people have been asking a lot of questions about it. Most of the time, what is it? How does it affect us? So on and so forth. So, um, ESG is an effort to use financial tools for the purpose of advancing political goals. That seems to be the case of what we are seeing. In essence, greenwashing investments, uh, most of the time for environmental, uh, causes, uh, socially just causes. So ESG means using environmental, social, and governance factors to evaluate companies and countries, entities, on how far advanced they are with sustainability. So once enough data has been acquired on these three metrics, companies use this to integrate into the investment process when deciding what equities and bonds to buy. Many companies do this under the false assumption that consumers and clients have their shared values, which is not the case. And in the case of a public entity, you do not retain the right to make those types of decisions that could financially harm people based upon your personal beliefs. That's something that belongs in the private sector with investors that say, okay, I totally believe I'm going to, uh, patronize this, this business because I believe in them and what they do. That is a personal decision that you do with your funds. Government entities have no business playing with people's money based upon their own personal beliefs of what is right or their own moral compass. Um, so no social credit score should ever be used by this county in making any such financial decisions. Now, keep in mind, the county does do business with ESG pioneers. There are huge companies, Google, Amazon, even JCPL is a mammoth corporation that wholeheartedly accepts ESG and embraces it. Think about it with green energy, and they are an energy company first, energy. So the county does do business with these companies. We do not invest or make investment decisions based on this currently. So I guess this measure is just a safeguard to, uh, protect against any perhaps subsequent board ever moving forward or think that this was an appropriate measure. Um, this, this, um, first was brought to our attention by Warren County. Uh, it was nice to see that it did come from there. If you recall in the past, um, it was a shame that Warren County did not join our request to join forces against Governor Murphy's immigrant dress directive when it came down to the sanctuary state agenda. When we had directly approached, uh, the board and they had cited that the issue wasn't a local or a county issue. Um, I spoke about this a little bit last night. Um, you know, we had our very own case where that applied right here in Newton, really case of abuse by someone who was here in this country illegally, who was catch and release and abused a young girl. So this board found it very, very important to do that. So I'm glad to see Commissioner Director Lori Chisla, uh, was able to move this over to us and understand, you know, all issues are local issues. And it's, you know, it's, it's the season that we all stand together and stand united, especially to protect Northwest New Jersey.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Good, all right. Uh, motion to adopt resolutions A through P.
Um, it's just a roll call.
All right, you better.
We did a resident.
I apologize, roll call.
Uh, Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space is absent. Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. Uh, 14, awards of contracts, change orders, and bid. Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has renewed the award of contract change orders, bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determine that adoption of the set resolutions is and will further the public's interest. Motion to adopt resolutions A through J.
So moved.
Mr. Fantasia, have a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Yardley, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space is absent. Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes.
Courtney, I just wanted to reference, an I there is a typo. I don't know if rhetorically you want to correct it. The word inmates is misspelled.
Inmates. Only teacher.
All right, moving on. Uh, 15 is financial. We have one resolution. It's a payment of bills list from April 12th, 2023. Have a motion to pay the bills list A.
So moved.
Mr. Hayden, have a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Yardley, any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space is absent. Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. Uh, financial B, uh, list resolutions to pay the bills from April 12th up to 2023. Commissioner Space up the same, but she's not here anyway. Uh, motion to pay the bills list B.
So moved.
Mr. Hayden?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, seconds, any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. Financial resolution C is cancellation of outstanding checks. Motion to approve resolution C.
So moved.
Mr. Fantasia, second, please.
Second.
Mr. Hayden, any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space is absent. Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. All right, D, presentation of the 2023 county budget. Fine. Ready? All right, come on up.
I apologize for my bad. Screen, and it'll be available on the website.
Would it be bet- better for you to be over here?
She needs to be recorded.
Okay, just a shame that you can't look at the board and with the people.
Can you take the mic with you?
Maybe take the, right on the other side of it?
There you go.
There you go.
Is that on?
No, it's not. It's just recorded.
It's just recorded.
There you go. Actually, I can hear her better, that's why.
Can't hold her.
That's not it.
Good evening, commissioners, the public, thank you for being here tonight, listening to the county's, um, introduction of our budget. I'd like to thank commissioners that were on the other subcommittees, for being here, for listening to our commissioners, just hop on the next slide. The budget process starts all the way back from July, previous year. So that's when it begins, guidance is issued to the departments, to the committees. They work in the month of July and August to prepare those, that information, and they submit it to our budget director, um, very late, sitting next to me. And while that information is gathered, and then in September, the operating budget proposals are due, and they are reviewed by finance, they go through the salaries, go back to the divisions, make sure everything's right, put it in a book that's about the state. Um, and then the two commissioners that are on the operation subcommittee did copy of that book. And we, in October, we start to have budgets of subcommittee hearings, where the decision is, and the record is, come to the operating subcommittee and go over every line item of their budget, why their request, what their justification is. And we listen to those. At the same time, capital proposals are due, so if there's capital projects that the department would like, then they bring them to finance. We put together another package of, of, um, capital projects with quotes and, you know, what's the life of the vehicle? What they're ever there looking for, so that we have the information to make informed decisions. In November, the capital, um, subcommittee reviews the proposals with the departments. And goes through the same budget process here as operating budget, where they come in and they present their case. In December, um, the budget subcommittee reviews the impact of the draft budget. There's information we're also waiting on at that time. We get information from the state, because a lot of our costs are mandated by the state. We're waiting for revenue numbers to come in at the end of the year, so we really can't finalize the budget until January. So in January, we finalize our draft budget. And then February, March, um, we review the budget, we have our work sessions, our public work sessions, where everybody can come in and sit with us. We're discussing, and we come up with the final budget that we'd like to introduce. So tonight, we're here tonight to introduce our budget, uh, to be concerned. We have then have to advertise it, it has to be available to the public. We have 18 days, it has to be at least 18 days that the public has a chance to review it. And then on March, um, May 10th, we'll be meeting here to hopefully adopt the budget. We have our public hearing first, where members of the public can speak on the budget and ask questions, or make comments. And then at that time, that, um, as long as it's been approved by the state, because the state also has to review our budget, then we'll be able to adopt it. So part of the budget process, um, the state, back in 2010, mandated a cap where our total appropriations can't be more than two, our, our tax limit can't be more than 2%, or, with certain exceptions. So that's one of our caps that we have to be compliant with. Another one is the 1977 cap, which in municipalities is a appropriations cap, putting counties, it's also a tax levy cap. And there's certain criteria, and at the beginning of the year, we usually introduce a COA ordinance, which the state allows us to go up to 3.5% if we do an ordinance and allows us to cap that, um, bank that cap overage if we don't use those funds. That's another, uh, cap that the county is required to comply with. The third cap is only for counties, is the county entity cap. It affects basically our constitutional officers, and prosecutors' offices, the sheriff, board of elections, um, the surrogate and clerk. And that, they are not allowed to increase their budget more than 2% without having a, a resolution passed by the Board of Commissioners. So the budget I were presenting tonight is compliant with all three of those caps. When asked, beginning of the July, to put our budget together, the goals of our budget this year were to be fiscally responsible at keeping the justice county affordable, taking strides towards having competitive wages and benefits packages to retain our equipment, maintaining and improving levels of service for the benefit of the taxpayer, and utilizing grants to assist in funding our core county functions. Park has been very, um, been a very helpful and very helpful in holding us to some of that work. So when we look at the numbers, our total revenues for this budget is 122,755,205 dollars. Five dollars out of the, every, um, county purpose tax is 101,259,145 dollars, or 83% of the budget. Um, offset with appropriations is our grants. That's, um, that 4% of our budget, or 5.4 million. State aid is where we do our capital projects for college. We do Chapter 12 funding, where the state uses perhaps the college's capital improvements in the county's, the other cap. And then we have two other small state aids. It's not the same as a municipal, we have the, um, energy seat tax. State aid that we get. We get 1.25% of our revenue. The saladias revenue is the revenues collected from basically everything else, like our clerk's office fees. Um, the sheriff's office has fees, surrogate's office has fees, our fines, our permits, that type of stuff. That's 5% of our budget. And we're dualizing 7.7 million of fund balance, which is 6% of our budget. And when you look at fund balance, there's three basic ways to regenerate fund balance. One is your laps of your appropriation reserves. So your appropriation reserve to do prior to your budget. If you don't do that, you have a one year to spend if you covered it. Um, if you don't, that goes into fund balance. We budget for saladias revenues. If they go, if they're in excess of what we budgeted, that also goes into fund balance. And then we get revenues that are lying, as we can, we'll get, you know, refunds from prior year expenses, or insurance payments, or financial reimbursements that were not in the original budget, that were maybe, um, Chapter 1, not added to the budget later. That would also, um, increase your fund balance. So at the end of 2022, our fund balance was 20.53 million, or 15.23% of, of our operating budget, which is in our guidelines of our fund balance policy. So, um, in the 2023 budget, we're anticipating 7.7 million. The next slide just shows us, it's just showing basically our, um, beginning balance, fund balance, and how much we're, we're anticipating with revenue. So if you look at our 2023, uh, current fund budget, some of the key items is, and this comparison, uh, last two years plus this year, our 2023 budget is 122.8 million. Our 2023 budget is 122.8 million. Our tax levy is 101.26 million. Our ratable base, based on new construction and inflation, is 21.2 billion. And this is the equalized value, not the assessed value. And our tax rate per hundred is estimated to be 47.8 cents per hundred. And this is an estimate because it has to be struck by the county tax. So then if you look at the appropriation side, revenue has to equal appropriations. So it's 122,755,205 dollars. And if you break it down, it's broken down between capital debt and statutory expenditures, which is 25.8 million or 21% of our budget. Offset by revenue is our grants. It shows on both sides, so it's tax neutral. That's 5.4 million or 5%. General government is a lot of the smaller departments in the county. A lot of departments in this building. That's at 11.4% or 9% of our budget. 11.4 million or 9% of our budget. Insurance or health, workers' comp, liability, unemployment, that's at 18% of our budget. Public safety, which includes our sheriff's department and our prosecutors, that's at 18% of our budget. Public works is at 14.3 million or 12% of our budget. Health and welfare, which is Division of Health and Human Services, that's 6.4 million or 5% of our budget. And education, education is 12 million, 10% of our budget. And part of our education is we have to part of attend college and for those that have Sussex County Tech School. So there's a portion that the state doesn't pay that comes out of taxes. And then utilities and other common expenses is 2% of our budget. If you go to the next slide, that just shows the rise in healthcare costs. You can see that our, in 2020, it started to go down. We did make some adjustments to our plan for our employees and we now have this HRA, which unfortunately is not having some issues. But all in all, it's saving the county money in the fact that they're still getting the service. There is issues with the service at this time. But in converting people to that plan, it's starting to go down. And now costs are rising because of planes and experience and now it's going back up. But had we been on our same plan, our number might be much higher than this. If you look at the next slide, that is the allocation of the county dollar. It's basically what I said to the senators. 22 cents of every dollar goes to capital and debt. 19 cents goes to public safety. 19 cents goes to insurance. 12 cents goes to public works. 10 cents goes to education. 10 cents goes to general government. 6 cents goes to open welfare and 2 cents goes to common operating expenses. That's just some of our D. workers doing a good job as always. The next slide is just showing what falls into these categories. I'm not going to read them all. Waiting to get out of here. But that just basically tells you what falls under capital and debt. Following slide shows public safety. Like I said, it's the prosecutor, sheriff, our contract for our jail services. Fire marshal, fire academy. We must pay a portion of that with the college fees. The next slide is 19 cents per dollar for insurance. 12 cents for public works. We have 110 miles, which is 620 lane miles. We have 448 bridges. We have 68 facility buildings. About 35 of them are occupied by people, but the rest are facilities that the county does need to maintain. We have a speed control fleet. And then 10 cents per dollar is education. That's for the tax college. And also our board each and our superintendent's office. And then if you get to the next slide, 10 cents per dollar. There's a lot of categories that fall in general government. And that's not 10 cents per dollar. It's covered a lot. You get a lot of money, a lot of bank for your bucks, or you're done in this case. And then health and human services is 6 cents per dollar. A lot of health and human services. There's a lot of grant funding that helps offset the cost of health and human services. And our health and human services department has a great job of getting the grants and doing a lot of work with that. And then 2 cents for utilities and other common operating expenses. Transit is also on this list. And we've received quite a bit of money from COVID funding for transit, which has basically paid their salaries in the last two years. So that's a big benefit of having to be able to have those services. Because there's not a lot of, you know, lift or reverse that. Transit does a great job of getting food to their opponents and we're on the website for that transit. Utilities have been going up, especially gasoline this year, I think from last year. So 2 cents for that as well. The next slide is our capital budget. So our capital budget is a total of 72 million dollars. The majority of that is for roads and bridges, which is at 8.7 million. Next in line being fleet at 2.9 million. And facilities is 1.7, but there's also library facilities at 1.1. Trying to make sure people are operating efficiently. And the next slide just lists some of the major items. And one thing to note is that we normally look to borrow no more than 10 million dollars in this year's budget. We're only, we only need to borrow 5 million dollars because we were able to use our funding to offset about 4.7 million dollars for half of our projects. So it has to save the taxpayers in that regard. And the last slide is just the numbers that I showed earlier. Our total budget, operating budget is 122.8 million. 101.26 million is our tax levy. Our ratable base is 21.2 billion. And the tax rate per hundred, this is our county tax rate, its equalized value, is 47.8 cents per hundred. Just wanted to thank everybody for listening and.
Thanks, Elka. One question just to the common audience. What is that per household? Did it end up being about $13 per average household?
It's $13 per household on average if you're taking the equalized value. So if you look at your tax bill, so what happens is we take the counties. Every municipality has a ratio. And that ratio is then calculated to figure out what should be. Everybody is at 100%. That's what your assessed value for your town is. So then that percentage of total assessed equalized value is divided into that tax, taxes to be raised. And that's what each town has to collect for the county's tax rate. And then it converts back to your assessed value. So your assessed value could be 200,000, but your equalized value could be 250,000. So one town may pay, their tax rate isn't necessarily going to be 47.8 cents. It'll be different for one town based on their, it calculates back. So just so, I mean, it's confusing, but it's just that there's no actual county tax rate. Because we're just giving you what that amount is if you take the amount to be raised divided by the equalized value. So that's what, how the county is at risk base. So everybody's going to be different based on, you know, what your town is and what kind of rate pools you've gotten back here.
I'm a little confused myself, but that's okay. We appreciate it. Herb, one second. You can sit down. I'm sure everybody might have a question or two, so we'll start with Herb because it's your birthday, so you can start.
You go first, birthday boy.
Okay, there was a chart that showed the average taxes were like $8,000. What would that rate be? So people have a ballpark idea. Do you remember that chart? So if you had, the average tax, I think in Sussex County was $8,000. Now, of course, depending on where you live, you could have 16, 20, 30. So, so, and it was a number. So with that number for the average house?
Yeah, if you took the average household, the average household was 259,000, thereabouts. And it would show a $13 increase if you based it on that.
That kind of explains it a little simpler. It's not exact what you're saying, but that gives you an idea of what, you know, taxes would be. That's all.
Everybody get to hear that? Did everybody hear that? Okay. I think that breaks it down a lot easier. Commissioner Fantasia? Was that Herb? I'm sorry.
Again, you'll notice in your town, you have, you know, different when you get your total tax bill. You have your school tax, you have your county tax, you have your municipal tax, your library tax. So there's different taxes that come in different towns, pay different percentages. So many times when I was on the Franklin Council, people would come to the, you know, to the stand and say, look at this, you know, and yell. And it was actually the school tax, the high school tax. I said, that's not us. So again, the county represents a smaller portion of your tax bill, just based on the size. The lion's share of your tax bill is coming from your schools, your regional, your elementary school and whatnot. You know, based on a very unfair funding formula that's coming and hitting us in Trenton as well, which is not particularly helpful. You know, by way of this budget with inflation, coming in at eight and nine percent, this was no easy feat. Especially with the goal of trying to bring salaries up to acceptable levels for employees. It's not perfect, but it is getting there with unprecedented increases in hundreds of thousands of dollars that have gone to the state by way of insurance and money for retirement. And every year, I ask Elka, what is our cost for mental health facilities where we send somebody who needs to have state-supported mental health services? And each year, we get nailed, it gets higher and higher. One year, it was to the tune of $800,000, $400,000. This year, just shy of $150,000 increase for us, but everything has increased, increased. Whenever we wait to do a job and we put it out, that delay causes an increase. This has been crippling, crippling for governments, more crippling even for municipalities, you'll see across the board. And crippling for everyone, for retirees, anyone on a fixed income. I don't know how we sustain this, but I can tell you with great certainty that this board tried our best to cut any and all things that were able to be cut. There's not a whole lot of elective projects, pet projects. And the board unanimously understands the difference between needs versus wants. And, you know, we live in the county too and we pay our tax bill too. And on average, it'll be a dollar more per month, you know, for the county tax bill per house. And I wish that's all it was, you know, that's all it was limited. But I just, not to be a defeatist, but I don't necessarily see that being the trend across all the towns and across the state. But I want to thank you, Elka, and thank Mary for your work. And Ron, this was not an easy year. I thought, I thought probably some of the craziest things I saw was as the director right after COVID and what that looked like. But this budget was insanity, the numbers and costs. Never saw anything like it my whole time. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Hayden?
I just want to say it was challenging coming late to the party, only being sworn in in January. I came late to the party, but you can see we got results. We were down 12 million. And that was with the challenges of inflation, the insurance and the employee raises that needed to be given. That said, we came in a lot, had a lot of meetings of department heads. I owe Elka a huge thank you. I know she put up with a lot with me. Thank you. Christina, thank you for setting up the meetings. Bron, thank you for dealing with it. Chris, I know I've made you turn right a few occasions. So, but everybody, thank you. Herb for being my wingman on a lot of those meetings. And down 12 million, like I said, $1 a month. So pretty happy with that. I think that was a good effort, Dean.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I'll just echo the same thing, just as Bill said and Dawn and Herb. Tough year, tough year, as Elka's called, just the perfect storm with everything that happened. But we did a good job. I know we've been talking as commissioners and we have a couple, two, three years ahead of us that are going to be just as bad with cuts. I hope we could always cut as much as possible to ease that burden on the taxpayer. But I just want to thank you guys, really, everybody. We spent a lot of time, a lot, a lot of time. And yeah, we had our battles for sure. You know what? That's okay. Battles are good, right?
Battles are where we are.
The contest where we were and I'm good at that. And grateful for everybody on the commission board, including Jill, to do what we did. So, thank you.
Commissioner Carney, also thank you, Elka. We have not wavered from our debt reduction plan that we did put in place. There was a, prior, there was a 35-year debt reduction plan. In 2019, came in, instituted a 10-year debt reduction plan. And we have not wavered through COVID. We have not wavered through eight or nine percent inflation. We are still on track.
Okay. Did you want to say something?
No.
You sure?
I am positive. Let's get it going.
All right, E., the introduction of 2023 county budget for our first reading. The 2023 Sussex County budget is being introduced for a first reading at this time and awaits approval by the board. The 2023 Sussex County budget revenues appropriation summary will be advertised on the New, in the New, is that what you're saying before?
In.
In the New Jersey Herald issue of April 16th, 2023. Resolution, approval of the 2023 county budget as presented for vote. So can I get a motion to introduce this resolution for the first reading?
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any more discussion on this? Well, that's what I like to hear. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space is absent. Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. I have a motion to authorize the clerk to advertise the budget revenues and appropriation summary as introduced for the first reading and also post theme on the bulletin board in the lobby of the county administrative center, together with a notice of public hearing stating that a, that a hearing on the budget and tax, and tax resolution will be held at the county administrative center, 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, on Wednesday, May 10th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. At which time, in place, objections to said budget and tax resolution for the year 2023 may be presented by taxpayers and other interested persons. We just need it all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, staying there. F., resolution is approval of the 2023 county form and profit preservation recreation open space trust fund levy. And G. is the approval of 2023 library budget and certification of 23 library access. Motion to adopt resolutions F. and G.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space is absent. Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. Resolution H is introduction for the first reading ordinance 23-02. This is capital ordinance providing for general capital improvements in the acquisition of certain capital equipment in and for the county of Sussex, state of New Jersey, and appropriating $6,930,342 from the county's capital improvement fund to pay for the costs therefor. I have a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as introduced for the first reading and also post theme on the bulletin board in the lobby of the county administrative center, together with a notice of public hearing stating that a hearing will be held on April 26th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Prior to final adoption of the ordinance.
I make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Space is absent. Deputy Director Yardley?
Yes.
Director Carney?
Yes. Resolution I is introduction for the first reading ordinance 23-03. This is a bond ordinance providing for various 2023 capital improvements by and in the county of Sussex, state of New Jersey, appropriating $4,88,402 thereof and authorizing $3,883,000 for bonds or notes of the county to finance part of the costs thereof. And I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as introduced for first reading and also post on the bulletin board in the lobby of the county administrative center, together with a notice of public hearing stating that a hearing will be held on April 26th, 2023. together with a notice of public hearing stating that a hearing will be held on April twenty-sixth, 2023, at six P M prior to final adoption of the ordinance.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, got a second.
Second.
Commissioner Yardley, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden.
Yes.
Commissioner Space is absent. Deputy Director Yardley.
Yes.
Director Carney.
Yes.
Resolution J is introduction for first reading ordinance twenty-three dash zero four. This is a bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of 2023 capital improvements at and for certain facilities of Sussex County Community College located within the county of Sussex, state of New Jersey, appropriating two million two hundred twenty-four thousand. There, there are, and authorizing issuance of two million two hundred twenty-four thousand bonds or notes of the county of Sussex, state of New Jersey for financing such appropriation, the principal of and interest on the aggregate principal amount of which will be entitled to state aid pursuant to chapter twelve of the laws of New Jersey of nineteen seventy-one. Have a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading and authorize the clerk to advertise this ordinance as introduced for first reading and also post same on the bulletin board in the lobby of the county administrative center, together with a notice of public hearing stating that a hearing will be held on April twenty-sixth, 2023, at six P M prior to final adoption of the ordinance.
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden.
Yes.
Commissioner Space is absent. Deputy Director Yardley.
Yes.
Director Carney.
Yes.
A lot of reading. Sixteen is first now, there is none. Seventeen, administrative report.
Uh, thank you. Um, just real quick, no, I thank everyone for the, for the budget first reading. We're very proud. I'm blessed to have the staff that works on this. They work very hard, they're very focused, they take it very passionate. Some of us take it personal to a, to a, to a, to a degree. But, no, no, everybody worked very hard on this, and I'm very appreciative of that. That being said, I did want to report some more on some small business grant. So a happy note here, through April twenty-sixth, we'll be dispersing seven, up to seven hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars. And if all the applications that have been approved for disbursements, get all their documentations to purchase orders and stuff like that, on the May tenth meeting, we'll be up to one million fifty-five thousand dollars with the reimbursements to small businesses. As of today, we've approved seventeen more applications to go through the process. So it's, it continues to move. So the only last thing I'd like to mention to the public, it is spring, and I hope it stays this way. The county is in, as everyone here is in spring cleanup mode, so is the county. Please be cautious of the sweepers. This is our sweeping season. By all our storm warning permitting, that we have to do, the sweepers will be out in full force. So please pay attention to the traffic controls and, and the sweeping operations that are going on. And with that, that's all I got tonight, Commissioner.
Thank you. Seventeen, county council.
Nothing darker, you covered my items.
All right. Eighteen, is there any unfinished business? Any commissioner?
Sing happy birthday to Herb.
That's new business. That's new business.
New business, is it now?
Old, old.
Sorry. Had to get that dig in, right?
Nineteen, is there any new business? All right, twenty, this is public session from the floor. This public session is, is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at your microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. I get a motion to open the floor for public comment.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Yardley, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayden, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Is there anyone from the floor that would like to speak?
Alan Henderson, Lafayette Township. As I say, I've been reading your minutes since October of 2022 all the way through and the agenda. And I just have a question. Is it typical that an agenda, an item is totally skipped over in an agenda?
It wasn't skipped over. It was listed to accept the resignation, which we've done. And that was the only comment that was made. So you sent a letter in, it was presented to me, we've accepted it, you resigned.
Okay. I just wondered why it was skipped over on the agenda.
Because there's no official action needs to be taken. Just listed so the commissioners are aware of it. Thank you.
Good evening. It's Rayanne. I'm a Sussex County resident of Hampton Township and Sussex County employee. So I'm just here as an employee. So I work for Sussex County Division of Senior Services. So I have been working with our retirees. We're making progress. Now, again, you have all mentioned this, they're receiving a lot of checks, but they have no idea what to do with. Also, I do, I am meeting with a couple tomorrow morning. They had various great concerns about meeting with our Horizon representative on their own due to the fact of the conversations that they had. So I said I would, you know, sit in and see what I could do to assist on this matter. So they're bringing all their checks to see, you know, what is theirs and what is not. So that's the issue now that I'm seeing. Checks are being distributed, but they don't know what's theirs and what they have to hand. There's no, I guess, I don't know about you, Herb, but yours, did you get an I-Lized?
That is the problem.
Okay. So. All right. So that's what I just.
Let me click, let me just clarify.
Okay.
There were bills that will come in, and then there were bills that came in, which we've all ignored. Haven't come back yet.
Okay.
So those are one of those things that some companies might not get that for six months. So there's nothing to say, by the way, you still owe agency data. That's the problem, yes.
Okay. I do have a couple, two of them that have reported that they have received letters to going into collections. So I again asked them if they could come in and meet with Anna to see if there is a way they could stop it. They were here, I believe, at the meeting stating that she, we did hear what she said, that they don't go to collections. But, you know, when you get a threatening letter like that, they become, oh, we're working with retirees for like seventy-five, eighty-five, ninety. You know, so they, you know, so I'm like, all right, you know, a couple of my heroes can't make it in. But I'm like, you know, send me what you have, and I'll see what I can do, you know, to get it to Anna and see what we can do with this. So.
One minute.
Yeah, the communication is going. So that's that on Horizon.
Rayanne, take, take your time.
So the communication is, uh, or maybe lacking with Anna and some of our retirees. Hoping I can see what happens tomorrow when I'm there. Other than that, I just want to backtrack real quick with Commissioner Fantasia on, on the county having the preparedness. I should announce that as of next week, at the end of next week, I should be at ERCC, which is a disaster response crisis council. So hopefully I can join, you know, that team of some parents.
That's great. Thank you. Congratulations.
And, and thank you sincerely, thank you for all, all the help.
Oh, no. And thank you, guys. You guys have been very patient with this, and.
We were impatient, really?
As far as I'm concerned.
But thank you for all the things that you have done for the county and the county residents, retirees, employees, and our residents.
Yeah.
You guys don't get that enough either, so thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. Anybody else in public? All right, motion to close the floor for public comment, return to regular business.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hayden, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Twenty-one, reminders, please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. Number twenty-two is executive session, so be closed session. Would you like to read that for me?
Resolution regarding providing for an executive closed session not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of NJSA ten colon four dash twelve at sec, whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B and NJSA ten colon four dash thirteen, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B as designated below. Item five, matters related to the purchase, lease, of acquisition or real property or the investment of public funds. And item number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege county policies. And I apologize, I need to add Dennis Library to item number five. Be it further resolved that deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. And be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into executive session, the Board may reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public. And be it further resolved that the Board may take formal action after returning from executive session except to adjourn the regular meeting.
Motion.
So moved. Commissioner Hayden.
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Thank you all for coming. Okay. Uh, motion to adjourn from executive session, return to regular business. Have a motion.
Here.
Second, Commissioner Yardley, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, carries. Just for everybody that's out there, we did discuss the Dennis Library. And at this time, Elka, she's our CFO, she's going to pull the grant agreement to review the scope and timing. Our county council, Mr. Steinhardt is going to review the agreement with the library for scope and expense due to inflation. Ron, our administrator, is going to direct engineering to inspect the building and report back. Just for, for an example, we're probably looking at three months, hopefully sooner, to get back with all that information regarding that information. So we can keep you posted if you come back, keep you updated. That's where we're at this, at this time. Okay?
Anyone have a question?
Uh, no, sorry. But you can come back next meeting at the open public session, second comment.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, if you have a question about that thing, go ahead.
You said Elka will pull the grant agreement.
Yes.
That means look back and see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I'll just clarify a little bit. So, yep, I apologize. So we, we approved this grant, I would think, two years ago, I think it was, right? When I first got here. So we don't know what the timeline is. So we're going to have to do that in the interim. We'll have county.
The library director didn't know what the grant was.
Honestly, we were just chatting about it back there, and we're not exactly sure what the time.
I don't want to give you false information. That was a good one. Yeah, so I don't want to give you any false information. So we'll reconvene, we'll figure this out. It just, I don't want to give you any false hope that we're going to have it for next meeting either, because that never works out.
Okay. And you said the scope.
You want me to elaborate? Go ahead. Yeah, let me elaborate. So Elka, look at, we want to look at the grant agreement, just see what the scope is. What does it cover? What can we use it for? Because it's a dollar for a dollar kind of thing. So, you know, it may be that you can't use it to pave. I have no idea. We want to find out, we haven't, we haven't looked at it in a while. So we want to go back and find out what's covered, what's not covered. Does it have to be used by a certain amount of time? That kind of stuff. That was number one. Number two, on, on my side, you know, obviously we have this, the agreement with the county. The director had asked me just to go back and, basically the same thing. Take a look at it, make sure that we're okay time-wise, that what's our buffer, what's our, our cushion to get stuff done. And last but not least, because where this whole thing became an issue last time was prices have gone up. Everything is a lot more expensive than it used to be. I think the last time somebody had looked at it was several years ago. So the director, given his construction background, and I agree with him, thought it was prudent to have the county administrator, have engineering go back. Just take a look at it again, come back and let us know what it looks like, what, what needs to be done, that kind of stuff. All in conjunction with, how does it fit within the agreement? How does it fit within, you know, the grant? So, and that may take some time. Of course.
That's where I see, that's where I see.
Well, what I've been doing since I've, I think maybe even last year, at least when I've, since I've been director, is we have facilities meetings. We've been doing them, we had a couple, and we try to keep them going to, and, and just not for the library in itself, just. We have all, we have forty-eight buildings, forty-eight buildings, I believe it was, right? Sixty buildings. So we try to figure out what's going on. We, we want to make sure they're well-maintained. I mean, we have some buildings that are neglected. So that's where we're at.
Okay, so you're thinking it would probably be three months before we get all those things together?
To be realist? Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe two.
Yeah. If I give you three, we come back out two, just like a doctor, you know.
The eternal optimist. Maybe two.
Every four days enough.
So, okay, you got it. That's about it. So twenty-three, adjournment, have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Commissioner Hayden, Commissioner Yardley, seconds, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain, carries. This meeting is done at eight thirty-five. Thank you all for coming. Elka, thanks again.